...the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this law, the liberty of justice for all.
You're welcome.
Austin Cool here.
Charles Cool here.
Griffin here.
Wyatt here.
Hatz here.
Thomas here. Uh, meeting minutes open and close from October 20th.
Griffin moved to second meeting minutes, October 20th, 2022.
Hatz is second.
I have motion from Griffin, second from Pats, approve the meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Anyone here for public comment or citizen input on an item not on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, all business, discussion on overlay TID 5, overlay creation resolution 2022-34, authorizing non-metro connections to begin TID 5 creation work. You should have the copy of the paperwork as part of your packet. And Everett is here to explain it to you.
Yeah, so everyone should have a map within their, within their packet. We've gone over the multifamily development slide deck already thus far, but I want to touch on the map. So we currently have TID 4, which is the diagonal yellow lines. I had a whole conversation of why we're talking about TID 5 is because TID 4 is currently at the half of its life. We have a proposed development on the corner of North Monroe Clarkson that TID 4 currently does.
Do we have a microphone by you in here?
I'll just, I'll come up here. Are you still up here?
You sit in Sarah's seat, that's fine.
So we have a development opportunity at the corner of North Monroe Clarkson, and currently TID 4 cannot support what the developer is requesting as a gap. So this is, many months ago, we started conversations of how would we potentially support this developer, or any developer that comes in the future if they choose to not build in Waterloo. So we came up with a new draft boundary of TID 5. So touching a few key points of TID 5 here, it comes as most of, of TID 4 besides two single-family homes, Dollar General and the Pig. So the city is not going to close TID 4 based upon this TID 5 concept. It's still going to be established, TID 5 is going to overlay that area. And then jumping over North Monroe Street, there's potential development talks on the parcels that were formerly owned by Watertown Medical Center. Those conversations will be happening soon. The developer for those typically does a lot of senior living type of work, different housing options like that for the elderly. Another key point to point out on this map is, so with boundary lines for, for mixed-use TID, you need to have, you need to stay under 35% newly-planted residential. So it's why this boundary is kind of, is large in, in concept, as well as having, keeping these boundaries, these parcels contiguous throughout the district. So, you know, jumping down south to West Madison Street, there's the redevelopment corridor for Waterloo, which would be the old Casey's as well as the old Burger King site. So being able to define those parcels within the district is huge for your development opportunities, as well as in the K property entering the community near Trek with Breeze as well. So the boundary is roughly, the way it sits right now is 32% newly-planted residential. So around that 35% mark for a mixed-use TID district. The values of this district would add to be roughly 7% of the city's total value in TID cost, or in TIDS. So we're far under that 12% TID rule that every municipality needs to stay under. Can I answer any questions that anyone has for me as far as this TID boundaries or developments, processes, things like that?
The Plan Commission had a really interesting conversation about it. Everett, can you kind of recap what we got about, especially in respect to Van Holtons and the taxes that the school would not get?
So I, unfortunately, I can't speak on Van Holtons because I have zero information about it. I, no, I never, haven't talked to Van Holtons about any projects that they're proposing. As I just said, I don't have any details or knowledge about what they're proposing, so.
Well, what Barry had said is that they are going to be, they have to put in a sewer plant to the tune of $5 million. So if they're in the district, they may be, you know, wanting to, you know, use some of the TID.
Yep, so the point of the TID district is to be able to support those businesses that are within that, or to support developers within those district boundary lines. So if it comes down the path of Van Holtons needing assistance to put a sewer plant in, as you had mentioned, then that is something that the due diligence of the city is going to have to go through as far as drafting developers' agreements, site plans, projects, permitting, everything like that, has to go through the whole process. So if they do need assistance, obviously with the creation of this, this boundary, they're able to receive it. If not this boundary, they couldn't receive that assistance. But, you know, if they're looking at a sewer plant on their parcel within this district to retain them as a business is a huge value compared to a $5 million investment from them. So that's one other, a whole other thing of TID is, you know, you're able to retain these businesses that are either expanding, changing production, things like that.
You had mentioned that the, that the district is 32% residential because we can't go over 35%, right?
Yep.
So what happens? Is that just for a, a starting point that those percents apply? Because if it's 32% residential now and you put, you know, a development on it that's residential, won't that increase that number?
No, so newly-planted residential means the, the intent of being residential. So with, where this is listed right now, 32% of the property that's within this boundary line can, is, is proposed to be residential, or there's, as far as the comprehensive plan for the city goes, is thought to be residential.
At some point in the TID life?
Yes, because currently it's not, it's zoning, it's not zoned residential, but the newly-planted rule is saying that if you're within that district's life, the newly-planted residential can't exceed that 35%.
So what about, like, if all this property that John, um, Willafer sells, if developers were to come in and say, "Oh, I'm going to put houses on all of this property," we would have to refuse them?
No, that's stay under the 32%, that encompasses that 32%.
So 32% is just like free straight?
Yeah, so out of this district, so out of the, out of what you see on this map, 32% is newly-planted residential or deemed newly-planted residential.
Am I the only one not understanding this? Because it's Ag now. So he would not be able, there would not be able to be a development on this, is that what you're saying?
Based upon the planning that the city has done in the past, the concept of that land being residential is part of this TID create, is part of this TID creation. So with the intent of that land being transformed as residential, that adds that newly-planted residential mark. So yes, why you have a mix of institutional uses within this district as far as the school district, the library, you have municipal own land, which is the wooded areas, as well as the Morrison Field and Substation, and then you have industrial, where you manufacture and commercial uses as well within this district. So it all offsets that newly-planted residential mark. So if this district, you cut off Breeze, you cut off Van Holtons, that newly-planted residential number would skyrocket above that 35%.
And that's okay? I mean, that's okay to do?
To go above 35%?
Yeah.
No, you can't.
No.
So the way that, the way that this is set up, you have, there's 3% sitting there that could be newly-planted residential. The way that this is set up, you're sitting at 32, so you're good as far as a mixed-use TID goes.
I guess I'm just looking for clarification on a couple of items. The short Elliot Henderson is the subcontractor chief.
Correct, yep.
And the total cost of the TID creation is an amount not to exceed $23,000?
Correct.
Now, in discussing this with Everett and Mayor, I should also point out that Ellers is going to be involved in the financial end, and we're be reviewing any documents. The financial documents and the city attorney will also be reviewing the documents.
How would this be funded?
The resolution should stake.
It's coming from TID 2 to us alone, to TID 5 to be paid back with a, we didn't have a timeline or, but it's to be determined.
That will be included in the actual TID documents of the payback of that?
Right. Everybody hear that?
Yes.
Okay.
So just to understand, um, the way this is drawn up, TID 4 is not closing, it will close on its natural timeline, but it is something that can also feed into the overlay of TID 5. This isn't just being created for one developer, it's being created for the encompassing area. As we all know, Casey's and that area need a, a little bit of life brought into it. The way TID 4 was originally drawn up, it's a very plain Jane document that really had no plan to it. It really showed a lot more of this area to begin with, and what developers have to see, the plans that the city has, investments that the city has, and what they'd like to see in the future. We had this comprehensive plan out there for over 15 years, and we really don't need it. What this is doing is utilizing part of that plan to show where development can be in our state. If the change doesn't happen upon the density property, that's fine, this is being drawn up for them. But at the moment, we do have somebody that is interested in developing, and like them, I'm sure there's going to be some shortfall. This particular TID is our first pay-go one, so we're not buying properties, we're not tearing anything down, we're not really putting anything into it other than the expense of, you know, all the documents you have to create for the state to make this happen. Which is what it is, a butt for, if it wasn't for this district, we could not get a development. And if this particular one doesn't work, that's not to say another one won't come down the line. So it is planning for our future, we do know we're kind of landlocked on the other side of our city, so let's look at the other side and, and see if we can make something work out there.
When does 2 close?
I'm trying to think off the top of my head, I just can't come up with the number.
I'm not sure, we take 2 close.
I go through that question.
So if the loan is.
When does TID 2 close?
When does 2 close?
The loan would have to be paid back, the $23,000 would have to be paid back.
He has that time frame, yes.
He has that time frame, yes.
So we, we've got, we've got some years in 2, we've got some time in that one. But that will be part of the document that's created with the payback. We're, we're talking $23,000, we're not talking $100,000.
In answer to your question now, it's just immediate resolution.
Any other question?
Well, by putting this, all of this property into a TID district, do we have any idea how much money the school will lose?
Zero by creating the district. So you have to create the district, any improved value that incremented helped in that district. So you're not, you're not stealing money from anyone as of right now by creating a district.
What was Barry talking about? No, you know Everett, because you were conversing with him on it.
I, I was confused because it was all over the place. He was talking about the sewer plant, and that would have been broken up by the taxing jurisdictions. He had to reiterate it himself.
The school would lose money.
So, oh.
On the new, on the new growth.
On the new growth, it's, it's.
Right.
That's what he was.
Oh, okay.
Which means they wouldn't lose, but they would gain.
They wouldn't gain.
Right. They wouldn't gain on the improvement until the district closes, then they would. Nor would the city.
And the city would go into TID.
Right.
The city would have to be paying back on their TID.
Yep. They're investors within the district.
At what point, yeah.
Is it developer financed, or is it?
So a pay-go, so they just essentially reimburse the taxes they pay.
Right.
So it happens the same year.
But within that, within the project plan, it's going to be listed out what those expenditures can be used for. So that increment that is captured, if you have a sewer plant, if you have this multifamily development, those expenditures are listed out within that project plan of what that, what that funding can be utilized for to help enhance the district.
It really knows difference than TID 1 was with Trek. Trek deliberately was, was a big part of the creation of TID 1 to gain all of that increment in that district. So they knew they were building on, so they were automatically going to be adding increments. And the school district is a part of the joint review board that has to approve this, this resolution or, excuse me, this, this TID 5 creation. So they know everybody is made for, but yes, they will be waiting on their turn to get that money back. And TID 1 was very beneficial, that it also helped pay for that road construction coming through, through the city, that didn't cost the taxpayers a dime, because it would pay out of that TID. And, and that's part of the duty of creating some of these TIDs. The, the increment still goes to the jurisdiction, but not the, excuse me, the level base stays the same, and will go up with, with normal valuation, but any of the new increments stay locked into this TID so that we can create other improvements with that money. It will, we also save the taxpayers money.
Everett talked about assisting this multifamily development too, and there's been a lot of conversation with the school district and their recruitment efforts of new teachers. You know, this multifamily development could help support the recruitment of employees of the school district, as well as potential additional pupils within the school district as well. So, you know, having the unique opportunity of having a development kind of sitting and waiting is, is unique, because if that development comes, there's automatic, you know, off-the-bat increment that's built up within this district going forward.
Well, what about the Casey, like the Casey's property and the Hardy's property, or, sorry. What about, I mean, are they going to have access to the TID?
They're within the district, yes. So whatever property, whatever, whatever properties within the district boundary lines can utilize TID as, as a financing tool.
If there's anything left, right?
No, so if they, so if they do a pay-go, it's paid as you go, so it's, they're getting reimbursed essentially, their taxes they're paying each year. So there's other forms of TID where it's developer upfront costs, so if you, if the city just pays the developer, like the city's done in the past, there's no increment in the TID right now to do that. So if a developer wanted to come in and demo the entire property, the city really can't give that money off the bat to do that.
Like what's before us?
But if there's no money sitting there for the city to give them, you can't, you can't do that, it has to be a pay-go TID.
Hey, that's the big difference with this, hoping how we done the other one? This isn't, we're taking out debt and giving you a bunch of money that you in turn have to pay us back over time. This is a district started that when somebody comes in, or the city was detained as an example, they're coming in and putting in 11, 13 million, I can't remember the number, they're putting in, in the game to the tune of $11 million. They're short about $3 million to make the overall plan work. So the $3 million that they need comes back to them in form of taxes back that they've already paid in. So we're not taking out debt, so when you make a comment like, if there's any money left in the TID, that's not really the scenario, because we're not putting money in the TID necessarily. It will come there through the increment and through projects. So if Casey, like used the Burger King where he just bought it and making it into a laundromat, that was one of his questions, wondering what does the city have for money to help me? So he's bought the building, he's invested his money, in turn, he will have it in some sort of pay-go back to help him, which is what they need, for example, to take out a loan. It shows money coming back to pay that off. So this is just a tool to make some of this happen. Does that make sense?
Yep. And that's outlined in the TID, I mean, that's part of the, what, what we're.
It would be.
Correct.
Yeah, it would be.
The pay-go, this is not taking out a loan, which is why Ellers comes into play as projects happen. They're the ones that are going to be doing the financial analysis of it, MDH could do it as well, but Ellers is our partner, that's who we've been dealing with for many, many years. Ellers has also created these TID documents before, but this is so much financial from this point because we're not doing it the same way as we used to. We're not taking out money, we're actually going to be collecting money first. Does that make sense?
Yep.
I'll let your desired folks.
And for the record, TID 2 closed in 2039.
It is that way.
Austin Cool make a motion to move forward with resolution 2022-34 authorizing non-metro connections to begin TID 5 creation work.
Charles Cool, second.
I have motion from Cool and Cool, to approve resolution 2022-34 authorizing non-metro connections to begin TID 5 creation work. All those, this has to be a row call, or can we do this as a?
Row call.
Austin Cool, yes.
Charles Cool, yes.
Griffin, no. Wyatt, yes.
Pats, yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Meeting summary since last meeting. Thank you, Everett. Anyone here from the fire department? No? Planning Commission, Jeanette?
Planning, you're with me?
I, yeah.
Your planning commission, okay.
Yeah, that's me, so, uh, the one item is below, or this commercial use below, and the one that we just had tonight was the document you just approved, so I'll talk about the planning division later.
Library? Anyone here from the library, Kelly? Special finance meeting. Carol, I'm going to give it to you.
Yes, we just met on a special night to finish up a few things with capital items and prep the budget for publishing, which has been published and we will be at it in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Charlie's got it out.
Okay, water light, Barry is not here, what we discussed was third quarter financing and the sewage treatment plant, which seems to be a topic of conversation at every meeting. Special plant commission, you handle that, your mayor?
Yes.
And you?
That's the, the one we just did, the one.
Public safety and health, Ron, you want to take that?
Uh, we approved, uh, holiday parade is later on, had a deal here, and that's about it. We talked about the four corners and the safety of that down there. Marine was in and talked and kind of worked it all, Matt's voted.
Public Works and.
The table phone?
Pardon?
The table on your phone, I come here when we said.
It's hard.
Okay, well, we discussed was the holiday parade and the safety down at the four corners.
No more recommendations for anything yet, on that?
There's no recommendation whatsoever that I came out of the committee.
Did any citizens show up?
Marine did, yeah.
Marine?
The gentleman that's been at the four corners.
And the gentleman that's been at the four corners, hold on.
Okay.
He had no comments, he was just there to listen.
Okay, is it still going to continue having a conversation, or?
I do not believe that we are going to know.
All right, I just get an email from the DOT that I shared, I know I shared it with Dennis, Mitch, so as far as their concern, that four corners is safe, they claim that we designed and everything of the sidewalk and the light poles were on us, but if we want to move the light poles, I believe we can, so I'll be taking that up with, with Mitch and Barry and Public Works and seeing what we can do from there.
Okay, everybody had a copy of that email, and we gave Marine a copy of that email, so that was, that was discussed.
Thank you.
Public Works and property, Rick?
We had three items on the agenda that we did discuss, we made no recommendations, but tabled all three, seeking more information in time.
Thank you. Recommendations of boards, committees, and commissions, public safety, the request to hire a police officer for full-time development, no action was taken on that, the officer has not completed, the required paperwork and talking with the chief is no longer being considered. Holiday parade. Ron, you want to take the holiday parade?
Um, we discussed having the Christmas parade or holiday parade again this year. Pretty much everything's the same as it was last year, except they moved it up a half hour from, from 5:30 to 6:00.
You can make a motion to approve their application?
I'll make the motion to approve their application for the parade. December 3rd, 2022, cradle run from 5:00 to 5:30, going to start at Van Holtons and go up to the high school.
Wyatt, will second.
Wayard, please, second.
I have a motion from President, second, Wayard to approve the holiday parade events application. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those. Motion carried. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four, authorizing company engineering group to start field work in road construction design for Wonderland Road. Apparently this was approved at the ten-six twenty-two meeting. And this resolution form just need to approve the resolutions.
Has to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four.
Wayard, please, second.
I have a motion, that's second, from Wayard to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carried. Public planning commission, ordinance three eighty-five dash ten point two. Additional use application for Derek Casto for the property located at eight sixty-eight Anacore. That can request a conditional use permit to allow for a home-based business on the subject of our site.
Is she in attendance, Franky Chance?
Yes, she is.
Yes, she is.
Wonderful. I told her it wasn't necessary, but we were going to see people at our meeting. This was a pretty straightforward, uh, conditional use that does fall within the, um, realm of acceptable uses. This is really more of a formality to let the neighborhood know that there's actually going to be a business run out of this particular home. There were no people at the public hearing, um, against it. There was one neighbor that was there, um, supporting it. So the commission unanimously recommended, um, for business being in there. She's already taken steps to, uh, to build improvements and, and, uh, make some improvements that ask that this is just a small portion of her home and we wish her much success. So it was, uh, unanimously approved. Just be careful. Or ask her any questions if she's there.
You have any comments?
No.
Okay.
What kind of business you gonna run?
A massage therapy business.
Under the same name?
Nazi race. Like you're a.
Excuse.
I do have an infrared sauna.
Well, Cool, motion to approve the conditional use application for the business said eight sixty-eight Anacore.
That's the second.
I have a motion from Cool, second, from Pets, to approve the conditional use permit for Derek Casto, the property located at eight sixty-eight Anacore. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those. Motion carried.
Good luck.
Thank you.
New business, we have one application from winter on-screen parking permit. Application for three sixty-three Jefferson Streets for two vehicles.
This individual did have permission last year for one, um, vehicle. So son, um, another daughter has gotten her license and they have three cars and their driveway's about, um, ten foot long. It's really short there.
It's a, it's a single car driveway, it's only, if you put one in the garage and you put one in the driveway, a hundred more to garage it, so I come this, there would be room for two, so I.
What does that look like on Jefferson Street, though? That's a really thin street.
Jefferson Street, we widen out. Um, currently, we have no parking restrictions on either side. Chief Sorenson, I've been monitoring it.
I get more parking.
I guess my only question is too, but it was answered with Gene's comments. I mean, last year Snyder's had one and this individual has one, so there was two, and there was two. Well, there was two vehicles parked on the road last year.
So whether there's two or three, it really, doesn't matter. They were on opposite sides, aren't they?
Last year, there was parking restrictions on the west side of Jefferson Street, so the vehicles were all parked on the east side.
Does that continue, does that continue now?
Currently, there's home parking restrictions on Jefferson Street, either side.
Just the standard overnight?
Yeah.
Alternate side parking?
No.
No, there's no street parking.
No street parking.
No street parking, that's why they buy these permits, so they can park on the street.
November fifteenth.
But we haven't seen one for Snyder, have we?
Not yet. These are, this is only the third car that we've gotten. Usually there's a few on Jefferson that I, that I haven't gotten anymore yet, so this is, you know.
Yeah, there's usually like four or five that request on Jefferson Street each year, but.
So if that's the case, would you prefer that we only approve it for one side of the street?
Yeah, I guess if she's gonna have two vehicles, I don't have an issue with not parking on the west side, but if I get one kitty corner on the east side, I don't want opposite side. So if we're gonna get them, they're gonna have to be on the west side or the east side. I don't want to try to be following, I don't know if it's wide enough to get through, but, you know, and then it just makes for a mess.
So are they on the east side or the west side?
They're on the west side of the road.
Okay. So we can, you know, we can put that provision on.
Yeah, yeah, her two vehicles, you know, will be on the west side. Now if somebody else has kitty corner from her, they'll be contingent on the west side of the road as well, or we can move it to the east side or whatever.
Yeah. I think whatever we do with these folks, instead of first ones on top of it. Cause their parking just started this week.
No, it doesn't start till the fifteenth.
Yeah, we had it incorrectly posted. First, it's, it is November first, but, um, that was our mistake. It's November fifteenth through April first.
Where was that posted on the website that I found? Yeah, yeah, okay.
We corrected it.
We had a little bit of confusion.
Well, I would make a motion to approve both of the permits as long as they, um, park, uh, both park on the west side of the street.
President, second.
I have a motion from Pets, second, from President, to approve the on-screen parking permit for three sixty-three Jefferson Street for parking on the west side of Jefferson Street. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. Future agenda items and announcements, we have the public budget hearing on November seventeen at seven PM, just before the council meeting. Anyone else have anybody?
Um, I did the public test today for the election equipment. No one came. But everything turned out fine, our numbers were all fine, and I did ran ballots through and they all matched. So we are ready to go, um, for the election on Tuesday. And we have been inundated with, um, early absentee voting. We're well over four hundred and twenty, um, absentee applications that we've done already. So it's a very large number. So we still have tomorrow, um, eight to four-thirty to get some more, so.
Vote on two thing.
I have.
I have one item. Uh, just a reminder that winter parking restrictions going to affect on November fifteenth.
Correct.
It's November fifteenth to April first, there's no parking on any steady street from one AM to six AM. And that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion called that, from Griffin to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Sorry, Richard.
Rich has an announcement that.
Sorry, Richard. I'm not gonna be at the next meeting. I'll be in Florida for one and California for the other.
Oh, shut up.
You knew, you knew.
I didn't know where you were gonna be.
Hey. No internet out there?
Yeah. Not in California, they've shut it down.
California's gonna be tough.
Push it up.
Cause I'm gonna be driving, I gotta go back.